Please stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to the meeting. Next thing on the agenda, approval of the minutes for last meeting, June 1st.
Yeah.
It was okay.
I made a motion, we approved the minutes for the June 1st meeting.
I'll second.
So we, Kent's made a motion and Chris has seconded it to approve the minutes from the last meeting. All those in favor? And next is your Richard.
Yes.
To approve Richard Greenwald as our code enforcement officer. I was impressed with your resume.
Thank you. Quite a life.
Yeah.
He currently does codes three days a week over in Belgrade. And he had some availability and his town manager over there put him in contact with me and I thought we could use some more hours as we discussed and there was there was some money available in the budget because we had moved forward with the plan to go with the KB cog mix thing. So we had a little extra in there so we can get some time out of out of Richard to help us out. He's already been great about getting out, out and about more and people seeing him and he's checking into inspection and things like that. So it's worked pretty well so far. But this is, this is to officially give him the, some power to enforce things.
So about 20 hours a week?
16 to 20, depending on how we go. Yep.
Okay, great. It's kind of a desperate meeting, isn't it?
Yeah, yes, I would say so.
So he'll be in the office on?
So far, it's Mondays right now, Mondays, Fridays. Yep. Because he's obviously in Belgrade the other three days.
Okay.
So the town office is closed on Friday usually, so.
Yep. He'll make appointments with people to do inspections, things like that. If that's a day that'll work for them. If any can do that.
No. Okay.
So I had, I had comments, so in case you guys have questions, you'll meet him all that, so.
Questions?
I've already, I've already met him. Mike actually knocked on his door in Litchfield.
They really wanted to eat him.
Okay.
So you live in Litchfield?
I do.
Yep, I could, I guess. So if he's doing inspections, are we going back to code enforcement officer doing all the inspections? We still doing the private party? Inspector, having a third party inspector?
Yeah, he'll still do third party inspector.
Okay.
Basically because we're a moveback town, so you have to have a lot of, a lot of credentials for that.
Now I have all certifications except moveback because Belgrade doesn't enforce movebacks. So that's something I'd like to work on in the coming time then would, Monmouth, be nice to get moveback certified, if possible.
Yep. He's also a licensed plumbing inspector too. We have that with Ernie right now, but he, he, he has that license as well.
Yep, as a follow up.
Yes.
The property owners got the project going on. Now, is he gonna have a choice as to doing third party inspection or asking Richard to do it?
He has a choice.
Yeah, okay. I wonder if Joe then didn't disappear.
I don't think we offered.
If it's a moveback inspection, it would have to be, he'd have to go third party because he's not, he's not certified for moveback. We're over 4,000 people, so we have to follow the
Okay.
So we have to follow the state building code.
And then the way we, the way we left it, I thought, was that for small projects like sheds or decks or that kind of thing where it's not a moveback
Issue.
Issue, then they can opt for code enforcement officer inspection. And that the price of the building permits reflects that it got lowered for the bigger projects so that they could afford to pay the third party. That was why that whole thing changed.
And he can do shoreline zone inspections and all that, all that kind of stuff too, just the moveback part.
And just for, for the folks who are watching us at home, what's the threshold for that trigger of a third party?
I believe it's 4,000 residents.
No, no, the, the threshold for someone to be required to have a permit to do their project. So this would be, I think we said less than 200 square feet is the small projects like a deck or a shed.
Addition, yeah.
Or a shed or? So it's 200 square feet?
I, is it, so he, he's, he's already read it. I wasn't, I wasn't, I was gonna say, I don't know.
And so it's 200, 200 square feet or less, or maybe it's less than 200 square feet?
200 or less.
200 or less, there's no permit required. And an inspection would be sort of optional or at the discretion of the property owners.
It's not, and that's, that's not what triggers a, a building permit. A building is less than I thought it was 12 by 12, it was 144 square feet, maybe it's 200.
I read 200 somewhere.
Yeah, it probably is. That doesn't require a permit, but anything structural requires a permit. So if you're putting a deck on a house, you're, you know, doing structural work inside the house that triggers the permit processes, the building permits required. There are certain other smaller things that are not, like immovable buildings under that square footage don't require a permit.
And of course, anything in the shoreline would require a permit.
I don't think we broached that. I don't, because this 200 isn't from the national codes.
Yeah.
That's where we got it.
Then again, if it's movable, it is, you know, there's, there's criteria that trigger a building permit. So you, you can do certain things even within shoreline that you don't need a permit for. Right? I mean.
I think.
I would encourage a permit for anything in the shoreline zone. I, I don't know. I did not read where it's required for something 200 square feet or less. However, I'd certainly, I'd certainly, I would encourage that to be a requirement just because of silly stuff like when Kent called me and this guy's cutting a tree through treatment in the water with no soap vents up. And things like that happening leads me to believe that unless you had an absence of code enforcement, these, these folks are doing kind of what they want in some places.
But that's not a building, that's.
No, I was just using it as an example.
Like that, that's an enforcement issue. That's
Right.
Not a building.
Yeah, but I still think Kent brought up a, a good point, something that you probably should look at in shoreline zoning.
Could there be a conversation, I don't know, is that a conversation that might start at the planning board or a conversation that starts here at the select board about what we want to do in a shoreline zone?
You could probably instruct them to look into it and then they could look into it, but it has to, it should originate at the planning board level.
Yeah, so then do you need a motion to hear that? To, can we suggest or do you need a motion?
You can suggest, you can, you can ask me to write a letter and say that you, that you would like to do that. You can put it on a future agenda and you can make an official vote that you want them to do that and report back to you. You can, you can do that informally or formally, however you.
Let's just do it informally. If, if the planning board could cogitate on what they want, what, what would be wise to do within the shoreline zone with the, the 200 foot, except, the 200 square foot exception?
It'll be up tomorrow night, Ken.
Okay, yeah, let us know.
Just remember that if you decide to make a change to the ordinance, that requires a town vote.
Yep.
Any change.
I make a motion that we appoint Richard Greenwald as Monmouth's code enforcement officer.
I'll second that.
This was a motion by Kent, a second by Chris to appoint Richard Greenwald as Monmouth's code enforcement officer. One of two. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
And so this is a little bit different in Belgrade, as in, Belgrade has planning board meetings twice a month and I'm required to be at those. Do you folks require me to be at any of your meetings? Or is that just by invite or when I'm needed or I don't, I don't know how it works here in this?
I guess we can talk about that and I'll talk to the planning board and see what, what they'd like to have.
Excellent.
He's a, he's a member of the planning board.
Yes, I gathered.
What, how we left it with Matt is, you know, if it was a light agenda and there was actually no need of him to travel in.
Sure.
That, you know, there was no need for him to be present at a planning board meeting, just to sit there and listen to nothing.
Are you saying you do nothing, sir?
It's been light. Matt's been carrying the ball this year, so. It's been light for us. But I'll, I'll bring that up tomorrow night as well.
Thanks, man.
Thank you.
Need some AC in here.
Got a heat pump right over there.
Someone turn it off. Next is department reports. And Dan, do you want to go first?
I can, I don't have anything. I just made myself available if anybody had questions.
So I see that they've been marking Maple Street, making out there. So what's the next step with that?
The contractor obviously marks the street for measurements and remove the stumps. What I was told by him is he's finishing up a very large project that has seen numerous delays. As soon as he can get away from that project, he will have a form available. But I haven't got an updated timeframe on.
Okay, all right. Just so I know, when I have to start. Using Wiltshire Avenue or Pleasant Streets?
Um, speaking of that neck of the woods, I had a constituent stop me about some scope of work stuff that DOT was doing on Cabase Road just beyond Chris's house. I think they were looking at doing some ditching.
Doing a culvert down there right at the, right at the pump house.
Yeah.
This, my side of the pump house, there's a culvert there that's really.
Deteriorated, yeah. Well, apparently there's a property owner down there who owns the ponds
Yes.
with the bridge and there was some concern that DOT might go too far and destabilize the bank embankment there.
I don't think they're on that side of it though.
Well, they put up flags in the embankment. But anyway.
Well, they put up grade stakes. They did.
I, I believe I spoke to that homeowner.
Yeah.
I discussed the DOT parameters and I gave them DOT's call number.
Okay.
Uh, cause DOT did not brief me on that project at all.
Okay. Well, if you could just monitor it, I think that would be helpful when, when they get started or whatever, if you just go check.
They're already done one side and they're working on the other. I just drove by there an hour ago.
Yeah, I saw dirt coming up through there and trucks.
Yeah, they, they, they've already done the, the side going up the hill. They were, they were halfway down the side going down the hill.
Okay, and so what's it look like? I mean, are they going, I mean?
It was good. They just, they ditched and they, and they put hay down to, you know, cover it. Oh, it's good.
Unremarkable.
It looks like a ditch.
There you go. Well, then we've done our public service announcement. Judy.
Would you want DOT to give you, brief you on what's going on or?
Not on their state roads. The, I mean, DOT has the luxury of planning out their projects a couple of years in advance, so you know, they probably planned this two years ago. And you know, I, I don't, it's their road, it's their summer maintenance. I figure if they need to tell me something, they'll tell me. Otherwise, they're, they're probably capable of handling it.
You couldn't do anything about it anyway.
Not at all.
Paul, chief.
Hey, we have a lectern.
Impressive.
Hold all my paperwork now, so it's not falling on the floor. I, first of all, I want to thank every, all the residents of Monmouth for supporting the budgets and coming out the vote. Appreciate it. Starting Wednesday night, we have fair coming into town. Wednesday is going to be problematic. We got motor booty coming in and is opening up on Wednesday night and they're expecting anywhere between 1 and 2,000 people show up for that, so we're gonna have parking issue out here. Cause I don't think there's enough room around for 2,000 cars. But I have all my officers coming in Wednesday night to work that, just in case we do get a, do get a crowd bigger than expected. Reached out with the RSU to set up a meeting in regards to the events that led up to this meeting. Not having access to the schools as law enforcement is not acceptable. And we have to, we have to work to, as a team, to put a system in place so that everybody knows what everybody is going to be doing. I reached out to the superintendent, the two principals via Chief Roy, Ryan Frost, Chief of Winter, and we have tentatively, tentatively, we have showed up the date of June 21st at 5:00 PM for our first school safety and we'll be conducted right in this room here. So we'll see how that goes. As of right now, I still have no access to the schools, which is problematic. But we'll get through that, work through that. Saturday, 8 o'clock, we have the Monmouth Fair 5K race starting at the Public Works Building and running around town for about 45 minutes. And we got, we're gonna be blocking some roads off very, for a very short amount of time, just to get the runners through. Other than that, congratulations to those who are going to be our new selectmen and thank you, Harold, for what you've done and your, your leadership. It's been appreciated.
Well, thank you, Paul. I appreciate that.
Thank you. And chief, thank you for taking the initiative to make that an agenda item, the school safety issue, an agenda item.
I can read Dan's if you want.
Sure.
Yes. So this is from Dan Roy. He's not here tonight. Number one is the water damage mitigation to the boiler room is better than we thought. Mold has been removed and the water heater is replaced. Boiler and electrical system in the room are fine. Sheet rock has been sealed. They didn't have to tear it out. They were able to dry it and seal it up. Now just waiting on the contractor to finish repairing the walls and installing the cabinets in the kitchen. Reminder regarding the sixth annual Monmouth Beach Party on Saturday, July 2nd from 3:30 to 10:00 PM at the town beach. I worked canoe race at 3:30 PM, live band from 6:00 to 9:00 PM fireworks at 9:30 and various food vendors that evening. Flyers have been posted around town for the event. Thanks to everyone that sponsored. A whitewater rafting trip with a dozen members, including all of the junior firefighters, is scheduled for July 10th on the Kennebec River. This is an annual field trip with our junior firefighters. Lastly, Chief Roy would like to thank citizens of Monmouth that voted in support of the fire department's budget. Fire Department appreciates everyone's support. Thank you. So that's from Dan. I just had a, a couple of things. Obviously, you know, we, at the, at the behest of our insurance carrier, we installed additional fencing around the old academy building. When we met with them, we, we just kind of figured out it was easier to just block the whole back of the building off and just sort of wrap the building. Really no reason for any ridiculous back there. And we'll use the fairgrounds fences sort of the other end of that. So that's kind of how that's happened with it. We're fully onboarded with our new IT vendor. The next step is to install the switching and then start working through the security issues that town hall and especially at the police department trying to secure all the data. Now that the budget has passed, I'm gonna move quickly to start getting our vendors in line for some of the projects that were aligned in there, like upgrading the assessor database, the, the condensers that comes in all and a few other projects. We're gonna just start getting those going, so hopefully we can get somebody lined up. Uh, the last thing is I wanted to check with you, I brought this up before, about the possibility of going with an accounting firm to take over sort of our finance function in the, in the town office. I got the proposal back from Barry Talbot and Royer and I contacted Greenville, who's roughly our size. They use this, they use the same firm and he couldn't say any more good things about having them take this function over. He says the Mark, who's the head guy there, he's willing to go to all the budget meetings. He'll show up at, at town meetings. He'll show up at any meeting you want them to, to, to go over the financial status. He provides regular reports. They do all the reconciliation. They take the payroll. So we'd save the payroll function that we pay Bangor Savings Bank for. We could eliminate that. The position, the benefits. And all of the paper that we, that we currently store in the town hall that we don't have room for, they keep all that stuff in their secure databases on the cloud. So we will, once, once we process invoices, we send them to them and then we access them through their, through their portal. So they'll also hold all that paper, which would be, which is fantastic from my point of view. We have no room for this stuff. When I add up all of the, all of the costs that go through, we basically are gonna be paying the same amount when I add the benefits, the salary, the payroll expenses and all that. So my recommendation would be to move to this kind of a model, but I wanted to make sure you were okay with it before I engaged them to take this over, but so I, I didn't know if you had any other questions about it.
But we'd still be looking for another body behind the counter?
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
No.
Okay.
We would use the salary savings, the benefit savings from that position to fund this. This person runs a team with three other CPAs on his team, so we really get a whole team. We basically get a full business office that we sort of farm out to somebody else. Currently, he does four, four small municipalities and he does a bunch of single town school districts, so like school departments that the town's own, not, not RSCs obviously. So he has quite a little crew there and they seem to be expanding all the time. He's adding one or two clients and they keep getting bigger staff. He found out how to make money doing this, so. I would recommend we do it. It's just gonna save a lot of headaches for us.
What are the other, you, you mentioned Greenville?
Yep, he said, um, let me think, what were they? Cause he listed the school, the, the school departments. They, most, most of the school departments are up in North because they're, they're small groups. He does, um, he said, I think they, they do some of the work for the town of Farmington. I know that because the Greenville manager told me that Farmington, after they contacted Greenville, they moved to this model too. And what was another one? It's one of the counties. It's either Franklin or Oxford County. He does that. He does their business office too. So he does some of this. That's where I can't think of the fourth. Town, the county was one of the towns that I mentioned. It's not a town, it's county.
Is it, is it, uh, I, I think it makes sense if we're gonna consolidate with someone who's got some experience with other municipalities or county level organizations that?
I think it could be very helpful during the budget process. Mike Roy, who's the town manager up there, he says that he, he can either show up in person or he can do things on Zoom and he has, he has all the spreadsheets up there and when you make a choice right there, he can adjust it and he's got these sheets that cascade everything out. He can, he can show you how that's gonna play with your nil rate, like as you're working through the budget and he does it right on the spot. He answers all the questions that a finance director would. So like if you said, why is this line running over? He would answer that question. He'd be able to do it. He has it all right in front of him and he can say because, you know, fuel has gone up this much or we did this or. Yes, I'm sorry.
Just, just a, a question. Will they also perform the pre audit for us as well?
Yes, that's true. Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. They'd also take on the pre audit stuff. So we used to pay a pre order, a pre auditor. It's still in the budget, but he retired and we weren't able to find anybody when Linda was here and that's why our audit is so far behind right now. And they would take on that function too. So that's another pool of money that's kind of coming out of this to pay for all this thing. But it would be, we'd have really good books basically, because we'd have a full, we have CPAs doing it. It's very hard to find these people out there anyway, even if I, even if we chose not to do it, the position may be vacant for up to six months before I could find anybody to fill it. But we do have some applicants and maybe one or two of them might be good. Some of them are very inexperienced that are just trying to get into town government, but I just think this would be a good, good move for us. If you don't have any objection, I can move forward. I don't need a, a motion or anything because it's, it's less than a one year contract.
The two ladies back at the counter can handle all, I think, all the business that's going on.
We think so. We have two workstations in there now, so we can't serve more than two customers at a time at the window anyway. Obviously, if someone took a vacation, Lori would be coming across and she's okay with that, you know, to help out if it gets busy, that kind of thing. I can do certain things. I can't do everything, but I can do certain things as well. Yeah.
Do they let you do that?
Kind?
Do they let you do that?
They try to keep me away from the front. I tend to put things in the wrong place.
And the only time it'll end up being an issue is like on voting days when the, the two ladies from the counter are up at the voting.
Right, exactly. Yeah. Yeah.
So.
So we may have to make some adjustments. It looks like kind of we did this year, you know, we may have to make those adjustments where we, where for, you know, elections, we may just have to close the town office to break the business on those days because we just don't have the staff to manage it. It was tough to do anyway before because Angela was in there kind of by herself and, and on a week like this, she'd be trying to get the warrant together for you and doing the counter and it's just, so depending on where it falls, it may have happened anyway, because it's only one person.
And will the town office be closed the 30th of June? For, for whatever they do at the end of the year?
We may do it just for like the morning or the afternoon. I think the 30th is on a Thursday, right? So we probably close at like noon on Thursday so that we can do end of the year. So when we come back on Monday, no, Tuesday, because of the fourth, we'd have other computer system up. We can't roll over and, and do anything anyway, so it doesn't, doesn't make really much sense to be open when we're doing that.
But going forward, would they be doing that or would?
Yes, they would be doing that. That, that, that's another cost saving measure is they're, part of their fee is they pay the licenses for the trio budgetary system and the accounts payable. So we don't need that module anymore. We get to get rid of that because it'll be, we'll be using their module off of their server that they've already paid for. So that's, that's another thing. So when you start adding all this stuff, it, it really isn't even game.
Having CPA do some, takes a lot of pressure.
Yeah.
So this is, you think it's kind of foolproof? It's not gonna, uh, we're gonna find out that, whoops, it's not?
I don't think so. The town manager in Greenville said that they come with all kinds of best practices and they'll probably rearrange our books to get them in, into, into what would be considered best practice. And he says it's been absolutely seamless. The guy's available on the weekends. Late at night, he responds to emails. I, I guess they're very into making sure that their clients are satisfied. It's true. You really are outsourcing your business office. You have to be able to get in touch with people and get the answers you need. And he says the whole team, they don't, they don't assign, like Monmouth won't be assigned to one of those people. They work as a team. So if somebody's on vacation, you can just call somebody else and they, they know how to answer your questions.
And then when will they start?
They can start on July 1st if we want. He said it will take a couple of months for them to get fully up to speed. So we can get our processes down about how we transfer invoices and the payroll. You know, we gotta switch payroll over. This is obviously a little pain at the beginning, but once we all get on the same page, they work off the same, they work off the schedule that we currently do. So they do, they like to, they do their warrants biweekly. They don't like to do them weekly. Sometimes do them every weekend. That would be too much for them, but you like to do payroll and then accounts payable sort of every other week. So when you see it on the warrant, it will be, it'll look the same to you as it's been now.
And for the remainder of this fiscal year, we're?
We're working through it right now. So it's a combination of me and Lori caught this warrant together for you, like doing our best. But it worked fine. It just took us twice as long, but you know, but that, that is how it goes.
And you're all set for the next meeting, which is like on the 29th?
On the 29th?
Yeah.
Yeah, it will be okay.
Okay.
I think financially it makes good sense and I think that, you know, it, it having CPA look at things and taking away all of, you know, the pluses and minuses are there. So I'm comfortable with it.
That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Next is a select board report.
I gave Justin a little thing that was in the newspaper about about aging dams could benefit from a $7 billion loan program. So the Army Corps of Engineers, it's starting in 2023. So perhaps maybe our aging dam might fit into this plan. So I gave that to Justin to start looking into that since I read the newspaper.
Paper.
The paper version. Yes, so I can do the hustles. I, I am rich. Didn't you know that?
Yeah, I do that.
Land rich, financially poor.
Any other? Any other, any select, any other reports?
I've got one. Yeah. While we're on the topic of dam questions, I ran into the town manager for the town of Litchfield. And we had a conversation about the Woodbury Pond Dam. And if you recall, there's an issue there where the dam has deteriorated. We were very concerned that as, as, because Monmouth owns twenty percent of the shorefront on the Woodbury Ponds, we would be on the hook for twenty percent of, or at least we've traditionally been on the hook for twenty percent of whatever maintenance costs there are regarding that dam. And, and so they have been uh, working with their engineering firm to, and if you recall, they came to visit us to sort of give us the background of it. They've been working with their engineering firm. They put out an RFP. They heard uh, they get three bids back from their RFP process. They haven't finalized uh, the conversation with the low bidder because they're still reviewing the bids uh, with their engineering firm. The, but he, he did say it was uh, okay for me to disclose the three, the quantity, the amount of the three bits. There was one bid that came in at four hundred thousand dollars. There was another bid that came in at two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. And there was a third bid that came in at a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. That is quite a range. And so they're taking a very careful look at the low bidder to make sure that the work will get done, that the quality is there, that the low bidder understood exactly what they were bidding on, that this is a sure thing. And they're having their engineering firm work with that particular bidder to to finalize an agreement. It's not final yet. So they're still working through it. Anyway, I mean, either way you cut it, it seems to be good news because initially the price tag that we were looking at was somewhere in the neighborhood of five hundred thousand dollars uh, uh, total. And for which the town would be responsible twenty percent. So to find that they've got someone actually all three of them coming in below that sort of initial projection is encouraging.
Is, is there some kind of statute or rule or something that binds the amount that whether we have to contribute anything or the amount we'd have to contribute.
Not that I'm aware of. I didn't think so. Because you have a certain amount of taxpayers that are on that dam. I don't, I don't think there's any rule or any hard fast rule of policy about that.
So maybe it would be good for you to talk with the, with the manager for Litchfield and just remind them that any money they expect to get from this town is subject to voter approval and.
Yeah.
We went through something like this with Manchester and went through and the other towns on Cavesy, when Cavesy rebuilt their name. Yeah, I'm not saying people wouldn't vote to contribute. I'm just saying it's not, we're, we're not on the hook for anything until the voters approve the, being on the hook for it.
Yes.
Have we heard anything from the lawyer about the North Monmouth Beach?
No, this, not yet.
This is, should.
It's, it was sent to her last week, but I've heard.
You, you said, when I talked to you at the election, that the art of law firm is taking, seems to take a long time. I, I mean, I, I know we picked that law firm because they have a fixed amount that they charge, no matter how much we do.
They are, they are slower than I'm used to. They're slower than I'd like, but.
So should we be looking?
We could. Their, their contract is just about up, I think, here in the next month or two. So we could, we could look to go somewhere else. I can bring somebody to suggest to you next time. Just depends whether you want that fixed fee. I've had very good experience with a particular one at a different law firm, but I'd be happy to bring along with me here, but obviously that's up to you.
I'd be interested in that. It seems like this is not the first
time.
It's the first time there's been a delay in a legal question.
Yeah.
And it's not surprising if it's a fixed fee and folks aren't paying, being paid for their time, they're sort of like, we're going to answer all your questions and this is the fixed rate, then you know, there's kind of a disincentive for them to be responsive from the draw.
Possibly, yeah.
I know at some meeting that we've recently had, uh, I think related to something that maybe the camps or the camp, the keep, keep away, keep away. And that whole situation. There was a lady, I think she maybe lives on, she's a lawyer and she, she was somebody I think maybe, I don't know if we'd considered her from law firm or whatever. Yeah, she lives in Winter or, or maybe in Monmouth.
I have the bids from last time, so I can dig through those too. See who responded last time. Okay. All right.
Did we hear from the rep committee about joining a meeting with us?
I sent that off. Now that you mentioned, I sent that off to, to Joe and I didn't hear back, so.
We need to.
Let me follow.
We need to make sure we get that scheduled.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, one more. And this is a pending item from meetings past, and that was Harold's idea on uh, transfer station stickers. Where are we on that?
I mentioned that. I'm, Doug and I talked about that. I told him that I was, I was ready to order them and he indicated he wanted to bring it up again.
Well, and so that's because I had the same thought about if you sell your car and your stickers on it, because they didn't put it on a piece of cardboard or a piece of plexiglass, then we're right back in the same situation. So if you presently sell your car to somebody in Manchester and they're like, oh wow, I got a dump sticker. So we're right back to square one. So I don't know. I, I'm conflicted about the whole dump sticker thing. I don't know how to make it better and easier because we thought we had made it easier with the cards and having on the back, like the punch card system to get rid of a free appliance and two tires and all of that, instead of having the free dump day, which was a huge ordeal to do that once, once a year and cars lined on one thirty-five in both directions to get in there. So I'm not sure what the answer is because are you going to tell everybody? Well, when you sell your car, you need to scrape your sticker on.
They don't take the license plates off when they sell them.
I know. So that's, that's the hard part. I mean, I, I guess we need to.
Rethink.
What do you think, Ken? What's your opinion on that?
There was a reason we stopped using stickers. With, and I, it was two or three years ago for me to.
It seems like, you know, every, every system you're going to have will, will have some sort of loophole.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. And the loophole about the potential for someone to exploit, like selling a car that gets you a free pass for the remainder of the year at, you know, Monmouth Transfer Station seems pretty, that seems pretty remote to me. And I don't, I don't, you know, you know, sometimes perfection can be the enemy of progress. So I would say there are so many municipalities that I'm aware of that simply use a sticker because it makes it easy for town employees to identify who's in and who's not in a non-confrontational way.
Yes.
That doesn't feel like someone is being investigated. It seems to me like I would be in favor of a sticker process. And if someone really doesn't want to put a sticker on their car, that's fine. Put it, put it on a piece of cardboard, on your dashboard.
Take it off the dash.
All good.
Go into the transfer.
All good. And, and it saves us having to have a dedicated person monitoring the flow of things at the, at the entrance. And so employees can be a little more spread out and perhaps.
And more discreet.
Yeah, yeah, more discreet and less uh, confrontational, perhaps. Uh, I don't know. I'm still in favor of stickers. I think, I think this.
This is the confrontation to just a, a single situation instead of every car that comes.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah. So someone doesn't have a sticker. Hey, I noticed you didn't have a sticker. Uh, do you need one? Because you just need to show me your registration that you're a Monmouth resident. And I'll get you a sticker. Trying to be helpful here.
Yeah.
Oh, you're from Green. Oh, well. Surprise, surprise.
No, and I, I see that side of it. Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
What will we do about the the free stuff that you get?
So will they still get a card for the free, free on, you know, so if you go in, register your car, you've got like a punch card.
Yep, or a check off card.
Check off card for the.
And we can do that. It's not any different than what we're doing now. We're just kind of separating the permit from the.
All right. And, and, and what was the, originally we had said it was going to be once a year, calendar year cycle?
Could be.
Okay. So we just put it.
We'll have to come. Yeah. The first year, I mean, we could hand them out probably just right at the transfer station or wherever for anybody that needs to change over. And then next, and then after that, it would just be probably when you register your car. Just, just like now.
Okay. So then, so then, and, and so I would get a sticker when I register my car.
And your card, if that's what you wanted to do.
Okay. And that would, would, by the way, does, is that automatically sent out? I mean, if I register my car online.
You don't get, at the mo-, at the moment, if you register online, you just have to call the town office and they'll.
All right. Does the town receive a notice that I've registered my car online?
Not really. What we receive is receive an ACA payment for the, for the excise, but we don't, it doesn't really line up to the.
Doesn't say who I am or my address is, or there's no way to figure out.
I mean, it would be in the system. Like, like if we went back in to go register you again, we would know it. But we wouldn't necessarily know it when it happened that you did it. So if you came in in person the next year to register your car, we would know it because we have that data transfer, but there's nothing that sort of prints out that we know that these people registered through entry. So it makes sense.
So then, like, there would be no, like, uh, twenty, twenty twenty-two sticker, like a yellow one. And then the twenty twenty-three sticker would be.
Some different color. Yeah. Just so it was easy for the staff to identify whether it was valid.
So there'd be different colors for.
By every year, we'd probably make it a different color over, just like, uh, I mean, like registration stickers, you know, they change and every five or six years they start over again or whatever.
Yes, Mark.
So are these stickers going to have like a, a punch on the month on them or something? Because everybody's vehicle registration expires in a different month.
Yeah.
So if you've got a sticker that says twenty twenty-two, um, not to complicate things, how do you?
Yeah, that's true. Yeah.
You know, my registration, I'm going to renew it, but I can't get my new sticker until January. Just, yeah, I don't know. It, it almost seems like they're going to have to have a date, a, a month on them to punch out when you register your vehicle that, you know, for that year, the month gets punched out or something.
Or they're issued just annually in January. We could do that too. Just how you want it to work.
That was my thought, was you just issue them and you can get them anywhere, anytime before January first, if you come in and get your next year's sticker.
Right.
But it's not valid until January first. You can come in when you pay tax bill. You know, if you could have them ready. So when they pay the tax, people pay their tax bill in October, here's your twenty-three transfer.
Transfer station sticker.
Right. Good until twenty-three.
And they'd have a supply at the, at the transfer station. So if someone shows up and they don't have a sticker, they get last year's sticker, then an employee can go and say, hey, where's your sticker? And I can say, oh, well, here's my registration. I'm from Monmouth. And they would be like, okay, here's your sticker for next, for, for twenty twenty-three. Sound reasonable? Right?
Yes. Being able to put them on a piece of plexiglass would be very important. People like myself that have numerous vehicles and they're rotating so that I would need eight or nine stickers to put on my vehicle.
Yeah, we don't want to give you eight or nine stickers. You'll get one sticker, right? Yeah, you're good.
I don't know. To me, it seems almost easier to do what we're doing right now.
Well, and that's why it's like, well, if we're doing stickers and people want to put, why not just say, you know, card must be displayed to enter the dump. I mean, sorry, transfer station, sorry. Sorry. I mean, that's why are we reinventing the wheel? We already have a card and it, why not just say it must be displayed to enter the, to enter the facility? But I don't know. I don't know. What's the right answer? Harold?
Harold, you got, you got an answer to that?
Words of wisdom.
I think Ken said it best when he said that sometimes perfection impedes progress.
We had that.
Overthinking.
I think so.
Make whatever the board desires for.
So, all right.
What do we desire?
I'm, I'm in favor of Harold's original suggestion, which is that we go with annual stickers that are issued on January first or thereabouts. Uh, maybe a little ahead of time to give people plenty of time to adapt.
And their wrapping paper.
And they can put it on their windshield or we tell them where to put it, wherever they want to put it.
Yeah.
Put it on their, put it on their windshield or their side, whatever. And there's a supply of it at the transfer station so that if someone doesn't have one, they can simply show up the registration to get one. And when folks get have some sort of interaction with the town hall, they can pick one up there too, if they want one. And every year we change a color. And if you want to do plexiglass, you only get one, Ray. We're not giving them out willy nilly because we know what happens when that, when that goes on. That's part of the problem. Actually, that's part of the problem with the punch card is that it's easy to photocopy. Oh, yeah. Well, you should hear some of the rumors, Ray. So so, so, yeah. So it's an official thing and we can, we can, we can fill in, whatever we decide, we can fill in the folks from Wales and make it easy for them to, to do the same.
I like what we're doing now.
You want to arm wrestle that?
Solid two, two to two, then you wait till the meeting in, a meeting in July when you have.
No, I'm okay with the stickers. I just, you know, I can be okay with that.
Okay, we'll make it work.
Okay.
Right, Dan? We'll figure it out.
Hold it.
Yeah.
The horse is going. Next is probably comment.
And on the TV.
Somebody there. Okay. All the comment here.
I'd just like to say I'm glad we don't have any major problems we have to figure out.
This is it.
We're saving those for active July first.
Okay. Uh, next is to consider approving the dispersment warrant policy for the town of Monmouth, Maine.
Okay. So what statute allows you to do is the practice where you each individually go, so this is, I'm going to talk about this in two parts. So the first part is the process when you don't have a meeting and in the past you've gone to the town office kind of individually and signed that. We really should have a policy that says that because the statute kind of outlines that you're supposed to approve that policy every year. If you're not going to vote in person at a meeting like you usually do, but on the occasion that you don't. So that's what that, that's what the part of this says. So that's what that, that's what the um, part of this says. The other part of this policy statute allows. Um, payments of certain fees to be made. With the signature of one of the municipal officers. If it's for a specific thing. So it's like the education warrant because we really don't have a choice whether to pay the R S U. Bill or not, you can, you can vote no, but ultimately as treasurer, the sheriff will send me a note and I'll have to send it. Um, payroll fees, so that's the payroll checks. And the last one is the state fees that we collect on the state's behalf. So like the fees for motor vehicle and. Uh, hunting licenses, snowmobile registrations. So those, those three categories are allowed under law to be signed for by just one of the municipal officers. And then we can disperse uh, those monies. All other uh, uh, payments, so municipal fees under the way, under the way this, this thing, that's all the other bills that are exclusive of that. You cannot do it that way. So there has to be a majority of municipal officers. What this policy really makes it possible to do is for you on occasion to not have a meeting. And you wouldn't each have to come into the town office to sign for just payroll. Education or whatever. So we could just decide that we were just gonna hold all the other bills and just. Uh, the way the policy reads is you kind of go in. In order. So I'd ask the chair first and if he couldn't go, I'd ask the vice chair and then I could just pick one of the other three and if one of you came in, then it could go out as long as I had asked him in that order. So that's kind of what this policy allows to happen. It doesn't necessarily mean we do it all the time and it does give you flexibility. If a meeting falls on a holiday or. One of the reasons I'm bringing it up to you now is because if we go to this sort of. Outsourcing the business office, there could be a potential where you miss a meeting and they need to get. Certain fees paid like the school warrant or something, and it wouldn't be timely for me to have all you come in because of the. Uh, just in the way that they're gonna process it. So, so it just kind of gives us some more flexibility. Uh, obviously, this is your choice whether you're comfortable with this or not. Um. This is a complete um, lift from two other towns, so I didn't, I didn't invent the wheel on this. I, I copied and pasted it from another. Town in which I worked and then another town which they stole it from, so. We do a lot of that. So this is good, this is good for one year. This can also be an ordinance. If you have a quantity, you can take it to the townspeople. If they approve it, you don't ever have to approve it again, but typically we would approve this every year. So if you kind of did it now, it would be good until the end of the next fiscal year and then. Someone might bring it to you again if you wanted to do it again. So that's what this policy is for. So if you're comfortable with it. We can, you can uh, sign it or you can vote approve it and sign it. If you're not, then.
Uh, seems like an administrative thing to me.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, I mean, I would, I, I'm, I'm, Harold, you can lean on this too. I, I would say. I'm ha, I'm happy to. Entertain this for the year and then the next time we have a warrant. Let's, let's create an ordinance so that we don't have to think about it.
Yeah, if you wanted to.
I think that's, that's good. I think it's good. Need a motion?
Uh, I mean, I, I make a motion, we approve the dispersment warrant policy for the town of Monmouth, Maine.
So the motion by Kent, second by Chris to approve the dispersment warrant policy for the town of Monmouth, Maine. All those in favor? Thank you. Next is to consider banning animals from the town beach during the summer swim season.
This was, this was an email that was brought from the resident, from a resident who noticed it and they got beat with the, from the, from the water district and what I put in your. Packet was her response, uh, sort of her perspective from the work that she did with the Reedfield Town Beach. And um. Mostly, I think this is just so that you can reiterate that, you know, dogs and things shouldn't, shouldn't be swimming in the. In the beach where people are swimming because it does create the potential for E. coli and other bacterial. Things getting into there. So I just bringing this for you to discuss and decide what you want to do basically.
Already an ordinance on the books about.
Yeah, which I understand.
Dog poop, so, which is one of the reasons we have places. There's one right at the, at the boat landing. There's one, there's two on Main Street to be able to dispose of your dog poop, so. Being a lifelong dog owner, uh, and my dog went to the. Boat landing with me almost every day. He never, he never pooped there, but he swam there. So, um, and if he did poop, I picked it up. Um. I don't, I, I think that there's already, dogs aren't allowed at the beach when there's. The lifeguards there, I think. I'm not sure if that's one of the rules on the board. Is that one of the rules on the board? So, um.
When there are lifeguards, no dogs allowed?
Not specified. This says that's a rule, no dog allowed.
So.
Watch their. Uh, like seeing eye dogs or?
Exactly.
Yeah, service dogs, service.
Service dog.
A service dog, I think, but probably.
But I, I mean, who's to say two houses over? That from the beach, people that own dogs and the dogs poop on their lawn and they don't pick it up.
I guarantee you that, that deer and other small animals don't care.
And loons and ducks and geese and on and on and on. So I, I really. Hesitate to say that we're gonna ban dogs or, or certain animals from the beach. I don't, I don't think that's reasonable, so.
And, and if the uh. Public beach, the north end of America, the test.
Yeah, so I mean, if that's something that the rec committee wants to. Go on there and figure out if that has to be done, um. Then. That's something that I think has to come from the rec committee, doesn't it? I don't know.
It could. Do, do we have an obligation as a municipality to evaluate the safety of the beach? The, the water quality?
I don't know that.
We find out if there's any requirement? I mean, I, I mean, I see this as two questions. One is, like. What's, what's the deal with the safety of evaluating the safety of the water? And then the second one is, do we want to ban?
And nobody pees in the water. So, yeah. Think this one's just a non-starter for me.
Yeah, you know.
So the next one is to consider a nomination for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four legislative session for the Legislative Policy Committee. Currently, I am fulfilling Linda's term. She was, she was nominated for, for this uh, committee. I'm fulfilling it. Well, they're done unless they come back um, for something.
You want us to nominate you again?
I am happy to do it if you want to nominate me. If you, if you don't want to, that's okay too. It does, it doesn't matter. I'm happy to do it. I'm happy to continue to do it if you, if you want. You're so inclined.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is it a tough job?
No, it's a, during the busy season, there's an hour or two that you're on Zoom to go over the particular bills. Um. But I don't have to go anywhere for it. It's usually just a Zoom call, you know, for, for an hour or two in the morning.
You need a, a motion?
Uh, yes, I would.
I would make a motion that we nominate uh, Justin. To uh, the MMA Legislative Policy Committee.
Second. Uh, so there's a motion by Kent, second by Harold to approve Justin. Warrior to the uh. MMA's uh, twenty twenty-four, twenty-two to. Twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four uh, Legislative Policy Committee.
Do your, do your turn.
Do your, yes. All those in favor? Thank you.
Is, there's a memo that was in your packet. This is about the road naming. It's from Matthew. I can address it or it's in the letter.
You know about the, not a road or? Not a road.
Not a, not a roadway, not a roadway. Where is this? Oh, off of Blue Rock Road. Okay.
Can I ask what Matt did submit? Because I didn't get a chance to catch up.
Oh, sure. I, I can read it if you want. It's not very long. Town of Monmouth addressing ordinance requires that any road or driveway which serves more than one dwelling be named in accordance with other sections of the addressing ordinance. I received a request to name the driveway which currently serves two and possibly a third properties. Near Blue Rock Road, the preferred name for private way is not a roadway. The name not a roadway conforms with all parts of the addressing ordinance. I, my, is my recommendation of the road name be adopted. Matthew draws code enforcement.
Not a roadway. Three words.
Okay. Exempl.
That, you, if you, if you show that to Dan, he can make it just about anyway.
I'm asking, you can make two words if you want. Not a road?
Two word. Uh, he's got it down as two words. He's got two words. Road.
Not a road.
Not a road is one, but you know, if the town prefers, they can remove the road and you'd have just not a way.
Uh, does, is there a preference from the property owner or a butters?
My recommendation to Matt got thrown away.
What was that, right? Blue Rock Lane.
Well, apparently the, the butters had other opinions.
Now, that's the preferred from, you know, the, the people. It's just structurally, how do you?
One, one, yeah. Two, two words then, not a road, way.
In a way, whatever is, is whatever, or not a way, a not a way, whichever is preferred by the town.
I just want to know how to order the sign correctly.
That, uh, that's okay with E nine one one?
Well, they must have to look at.
Okay.
Matt approves it.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure it's gonna be fine. We have a, I mean, the other road that.
You gotta go away.
Is notable in town is. Go away.
Go away.
Matt struggled with the addressing. Okay, that's why he was given half a dozen. Preferences.
Okay.
I need that one.
Yeah, and I gave him the contact number from Mr. Senator Governor Augusta that does the E nine eleven for the state of Maine. Okay, so that he could. Kind of bounce it off of him as well. That's, that's what Matt come up with.
Okay, that's what he said, yeah.
Then, then we should spell it out in our motion because it's. Right? Yeah, so I'll make a motion that we approve. Not a roadway spelled N O T T A R O A D W A Y.
With two ways. Two words.
Two words.
I'll say it.
Oh, there's a motion by Harold and a second by Kent on to. Uh, approve naming, uh.
Do you want that piece of paper?
Naming the roadway that serves about twenty lots two and two dash two. Uh, to be not a roadway spelled N O T T A W A Y. No. N O T T.
A.
R O A D. And then uh, way, a separate word. All those in favor?
Was worse than seventh grade. Sixth grade, right? Stelling read with Mr. Bartlett.
Ready for that one? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Atlantic Construction, seven thousand six hundred and seven dollars repair to the trailer at a transfer station. Dust fuel. One seventeen Academy Water Project, seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars. Blue Rock Earthworks, transfer of trash, two thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars. Dennis Burke, gasoline, one thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars. G D I Cleaning Services for Town Buildings, three thousand and fifty dollars. Primal Industries, demo, four thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars. Little Shell Consulting Economic Development Services for two months, two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Maine Equalization Assessor, two thousand two hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Maine Municipal Association Health Insurance Benefit, seventeen thousand and three dollars. Maine Waste to Energy Recycling, two thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Monmouth Firearms Accelerator, it's half of the TIF uh, event, the, the event, uh, grant award, fifteen hundred dollars. New England Vehicle Outfitters, uh, outfit the Ford Explorer and parts for the sixteen Ford Explorer for the Police Department, four thousand four hundred dollars. Northeast Emergency Apparatus, turnout gear and work on engine eighty-one, nine thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars. Paris Farmers Union, calcium chloride, nine thousand sixty dollars. Rural Community Action Ministry, annual fund allocation, fifty-five hundred dollars. And Spectrum Generations Annual Fund Allocation of two thousand three hundred and fifty-five. Make a motion, we approve warrant number twenty-five.
I'll second.
So a motion by Kent, second by Chris to approve warrant number twenty-five. All those favor? Thank you. Well, I had, I. What's national night out? It's July, right?
July twenty-sixth.
Thank you.
Thank you for not blaming me. Thank you.
I make the motion, we adjourn.